Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September, October meeting, rather, of the planning board to work. And the first thing we're going to take a look at is the mid minutes of September 11th, 2023. You all had a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
If someone would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a Form A, Liz?
We do. I left copies of it in front of you. And the gentleman representing the former or the audience, if you guys want to get up and explain it to them, what you're trying to do, I kind of explained earlier that they're taking that pie-shaped piece, which is with one A.
I can do that for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is George Raymond, a Realtor with Herbert W. Raymond and Son Realtors located at 745 Main Street in Waymouth. Tonight, I represent the owners of 960 Plymouth Street and 20 Hershey Lane and present for your consideration the Form A subdivision plan approval not required to correct an encroachment onto 960 Plymouth Street by 20 Hershey Lane. I'll give you a bullet description of how the encroachment was found and became an issue. You will find all of the supporting documents in the package provided to you with the application. On your attachment A, the former owners.
I didn't give them the attachments.
Oh.
Because we do them, sorry. We do them at the meeting.
Perfect. Okay. Well, you don't, well, I have a whole stack of them if you need them.
No, I got them in my office.
Okay.
You can zoom right in.
I'll go right along. So, attachment A, when you see it, the former owners of 20 Hershey Lane were granted a zoning board of appeal approval on October 1st, 1974, to construct a one-car garage with relief from a side yard setback. Attachment B will show 960 Plymouth Street was purchased by the current owners on April 21st of 1978. Attachment C, the former owners of 20 Hershey Lane were issued a permit 4755 on February 4th, 1986, to connect the garage to the house and add living space over the garage. Attachment D, the former owners of 20 Hershey were issued a permit 09197 on October 14th, 2009, to construct an in-ground pool and provided a sketch of its placement. The pool was then installed. Attachment E, the current owners purchased 20 Hershey Lane on October 7th, 2019, and at the time of the closing on that purchase, it was discovered by the lender's boundary exam that it was likely an encroachment of a fence. The current owner and the owner of 960 Plymouth Street entered into a revocable license in order to resolve the matter of an encroachment to get them through the closing. The current owners of 960 Plymouth Street listed their home for sale on September 29th, 2021. A buyer was procured, however, that buyer terminated interest after learning of the encroachment and liability concerns. Other interested parties have walked away due to the disclosure of the encroachment as well. The owners of 960 Plymouth Street initially reached out to the owners of 20 Hershey Lane to resolve the issue without success, and the owner of 960 Plymouth Street engaged engineering firm Merrill Associates to lay out the existing lot line and found the encroachment was more than just a fence, which you can see on the plan. The owner of 960 notified the owner of 20 Hershey Lane that of the now-known encroachment. And attachment F will show Merrill Associates was hired by owners of 20 Hershey to engage to engineer the Form A plan before you today. This plan redraws the lot line, resulting in conveyance of land from 960 Plymouth Street to 20 Hershey Lane and rectifies the encroachment to the satisfaction of both parties without the need to remove improvements currently encroaching on 960. And we just request the approval of this plan for recording so the owners of 960 Plymouth Street are able to sell their property without an encroachment, and the owners of 20 Hershey may resolve the issue without removing the existing encroachments.
Any questions, comments?
I don't have any problem with this. I'm just curious how this goes for 40 years without anybody realizing.
Nobody had observed it.
Hmm?
Nobody had observed it.
I mean, when we build dwellings, we have to have plot plans, certified plot plans, or is this pre-certified plot plan era?
I bet some of it is. The 70s.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
They're pretty straightforward. Just trying to fix it. It's better than moving the pool.
Sure. Would someone like to make a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Who currently owns number 20 Hershey?
20 Hershey is owned by Jack and Jane Jambuso, and then Richard and Mary George own 960.
So it was purchased recently, or is it still trying to be sold?
No, it was, but 20 Hershey was purchased in 2019, and 960 is trying to sell.
Okay.
But 960 has the fence, the pool, the patio. Everything on it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you guys put all the flat ones together and start signing? Thank you.
Get to this after.
I know. I feel like I'm in the muddle.
Actually, hold them there. Sign their books.
I'm going to sign that, Jordan. Everybody can. Oh, and this one.
It just lives in my pen somewhere.
Give it back to them.
There it is. It's on the floor.
Thanks.
My father bought our house from Herbert Raymond just a million years ago.
Oh, wow.
Probably from the original Herbert Raymond.
Yeah, we can do it later.
Are we ready to move on to?
Do you want to go to 940 996 Hancock Street? It's after this whole topic. We can go back and read the stuff later.
Yeah, so I'm going to do.
Read the hearing notice?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is this one right here. This one right here.
Yes.
All right. Okay. I'm going to read a public hearing notice. The Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 2nd, at 6:05 PM on the application of Hancock Abington LLC, 105 103 Clayter Street, Dorchester, Mass. For site plan approval pursuant to the town of Abington zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw 17577, and a special permit application for a construction in the floodplain wetland protections overlay district, zoning bylaw 17535, and a special permit to allow outdoor storage of transport vehicles and commercial vehicle materials in the MUPP per 17539 and 17529. Property is owned by Hancock LLC, 103 Clayter Street, Dorchester, Mass. Property is located at 0940 and 966 Hancock Street on Assessor's Map 57, plots 1, 9, 10, and 11. Plans can be viewed at the Hancock's office. Bruce is chairman, September 18th and September 25th.
So you all received the Norwood Engineering Review Letter, Dave's not able to be with us tonight. I did leave you an email earlier from David that said he'd spoke with both Sean Riley and Garrett Horstfall from Kelly Engineering, and as a result of his review with them, Dave concurred with the comments contained in or referenced to be discussed in our review letter. These changes will be addressed on a revised plan to be submitted for a final review. So that's in regards to the September 27th Norwood Engineering letter.
One concern that I have with that, Liz, the most part of the letter lays out specifically what is that Dave was, things Dave was looking at, however, under the stormwater design. There are a number of comments related to stormwater. It's our opinion that the review is comments directly with the design, and you know, it would be more productive in revising the plans. We'll be available to discuss our comments with them at their convenience. So we don't know what the nature of those things were, what the discussion was.
On the drainage, no.
And without Dave here, we're not going to, so that's all the way.
No.
Liz, can I shut off? Does that have to be on?
Is it on?
Yeah.
You can shut it off.
Just a little bit easier to hear things. You'd like me to proceed?
Go ahead, proceed, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Attorney Sean Riley at 500 Washington Street in Abington Center. I'm representing the applicant Hancock Abington LLC. With me tonight is Mr. Mike Sheehan, who is one of the principals with the applicant and also works with Feeny Brothers Construction as one of the vice presidents, and Garrett Horstfall of Kelly Engineering Group. This plan, this property, may be familiar to you and some of the neighbors because we were here three, four years ago, right in the dregs of COVID. We filed an application back then, a site plan back then in 2019, which we brought a copy of it just to kind of refresh our memories. That site plan was approved by the board in 2020. So this is, nobody yell in the microphone, the top one is the old version, which, if you recall, had the six, the six buildings, driveway coming off Hancock Street, and then it also had a crossing over the river and what we call lay-down yard, basically just an open yard for storage of commercial things like PVC piping, gravel, whatever they use. Feeny Brothers does a lot of utility work for the utility companies, emergency work with the gas line problem, water line problems, things like that. So that was the original plan coming off of Hancock Street with the six buildings. I'm sorry, the loguette.
That's okay.
The new and improved, we'll call it new, and you can determine if it's improved, is a reduced site plan. We have 31 acres that we're dealing with. Sorry about that. I'm trying to aim it so the cable TV cameras and the planted wood here and the audience. So now there are only four buildings, and there is no river crossing, and there is no lay-down yard. So less of an impact in many respects. Also, if you recall, after the site plan was reviewed and approved, and the special permits were also granted by the planning board, we had to go to the zoning board at that time back in 2020 because of a frontage question. That, we were in trouble, the zoning board, they did not approve the variance there. Fast forward two years, the McHughes who own the lobster barn were retiring, and their Realtor reached out to my clients and said, we want to sell the property. But it's your property. You want to buy it? So they have since purchased what was the lobster barn in that property. So now we have approximately 311 feet of frontage on Hancock Street. Sorry, Chestnut Street. No, I'm sorry, Hancock Street. My bad. The, all of this property on this side of Hancock Street is in the Muppet District, as we call it, the MUPDD, Multiple Used Plan Development District. The district, as I wrote in my project description, which went in with our application, looks for low-impact uses with low-traffic generators that are in this part of town. It runs all the way down Chestnut Street towards North Quincy Street, but here specifically on this western side of Hancock Street, we're in the Muppet District. Again, 31 acres of land. You're required to have a minimum of 10 acres and a minimum of 200 feet of frontage. As I mentioned, we have more than 10 acres, and we have 311 feet of frontage. But there's no zoning issues here as far as variances. The special permits that we are requesting, the planning board is the special permit granting authority in the Muppet District. The three special permits are, the typicals, not the typical, but a very common special permit to do work within the Abington's logo floodplain wetlands protection district. The second one is a special permit to allow the parking of transport vehicles outdoors. And the third one is the storage of commercial materials outdoors. Those are the same special permits that were requested from you three years ago and which are granted, and we can go explain a little bit more about those as we go on. We are preserving the house that's out on Hancock Street, keep on saying Chestnut Street, preserving the house that'll be out there on Hancock Street. That will be used as office and park as a residence for one of the employees, at least one of the employees of the company. So it's going to act kind of as a security and office facility for them, and that's allowed under the MUPBD, I cited this section for you in our property description. The outdoor storage and the outdoor vehicles and commercial materials just basically kind of goes hand in hand with what the Muppets looking for. These are basically small warehouse buildings, and depending on who they're rented to, they'll build to suit indoors. They could be used as garage. They can be used as usually a small office and storage. For example, carpenters with their sheet rock, plumbers who are going to store all their materials, Feeny Brothers, who will be renting one of the buildings, will be storing their materials. But there are occasions where they may want to store PVC piping, which is longer out in, if you notice in the site plan, there is pay barriers between the buildings on one side for parking and then between the buildings that are open for delivery, storage, access to the garage doors. So that would be the areas. There'd be no storage in wetlands, no storage on the grass areas. It's basically available, so if you have a pallet of something, we can store it outdoors. So to cover up, it's a special permit. Sure, Mr. Shepherd.
Those are noted as the common loading areas?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be if there's to be outdoor storage. There may be no outdoor storage from some of these tenants, but better to ask for the special permit now so that we can basically work with prospective tenants and that the building department knows what's allowed and what's not. The closest building to Hancock Street is over 350 feet away, and as you see by the design, the driveway comes in in turn, so it's really, you're not, it's a tree-lined driveway, have trees going down the left and down the right. The buildings are going to basically be out of sight, out of mind. So you're looking for a tenant that's not looking for, to be, you know, that, some tenants, some businesses need to be visible on Route 18 or Route 139 for pass-by traffic. They hope people see their sign and pull in. That's not the type of tenant. This is kind of more like what Fiore Brothers is building up off of Chestnut Street, basically the commercial building set back off into the woods. It's well buffered, as you can see, with 31 acres. We're not crossing the wetlands, we're not filling any wetlands. If we're fortunate enough to get the site plan approval from the planning board, or we would then proceed to review by the Conservation Commission. But we have to do this first to make sure the engineering and drainage is all set, and then we'd go to the Conservation Commission. As I mentioned, there is no need for any zoning, special permit of zoning variance for this project. The traffic from changing our design, we submitted a traffic impact report from MDM, which is a traffic engineering company you may be familiar with. It demonstrates that we have less than half the traffic of the previous design. Add to that, we're now eliminating the traffic that Lobster Barn used to create. So as the report states, it's a de minimis change. There's almost no real impact as far as the daily traffic impact there. We are also, by buying that property, we're able to pull the driveway further away from Randolph Street, which was a concern back in the day because it was about 75 feet away at that point. Now it's about 250 feet away. So we've kind of addressed that and been able to, you know, basically hopefully take care of that issue there. This is not a situation where you've got to see 18-wheelers coming in and out of this property. That's not what this property and what these buildings are intended for. You may or may not have noticed the Feeny Brother trucks. You'll see them at ongoing work sites on the roads all through. Their main office is in Dorchester, and they have certain satellite places around Massachusetts. So when they have the emergency calls, their guys don't have to go to Dorchester to pick up the materials and then drive back out to Rocklands, let's say. This, they would be able to go to Abington and pick up the trucks, and they're typically box trucks, which you'd see from a plumber or a carpenter. There may be a machine that they park in or in the other garage, you know, at their building to move things, but other than that, you know, you're not going to have, again, the lay-down yard that we have shown on first plan that's no longer shown. It's not, we're not using them, we're not crossing the river. We have also filed the waiver request list with our application. The waiver request list is because of when you look at our zoning bylaws, it says in the Muppet Zone, when you have these commercial developments, it basically requires you to build it in accordance, as if you were building a subdivision road, unless waivers, and certain things are granted. So the waivers that we requested, we'll go over those in a little more detail, but just basically about a commercial driveway radii, allowing the driveway to be more than 600 feet, a roadway can't be more than 600 feet without a waiver from the board. This is a driveway, not a roadway, but we asked for the waiver just to document it. Waiver of required reinforced concrete pipe material. Instead, we use a typical pipe on commercial private property. Waiver of granite curbing down the entire driveway. We are putting granite curbing out at Hancock Street on the radii that you would normally require. Waiver of a sidewalk because we don't expect any pedestrian traffic walking out to warehouses 350 feet away plus. And then we asked for a waiver of the street profile detail. We can, again, we'll address that. We also submitted with you a photometric plan from a photometric engineer that shows we're not going to create any light trespass. Again, it was set so far back, I don't expect you'll see much lights. And we also submitted the traffic impact statement, as I mentioned before, and obviously the site plan, the project description, the assessor's card, and the assessor's map. Dave did talk to me by phone today, and I know we talked to Garrett Horstfall from Kelly Engineering. He was very positive about the plan, obviously. Everything that had already been approved is now even less, as I mentioned earlier, as far as traffic, number of buildings, impact to the wetlands. We are not in any wetlands. We're not filling any wetlands. Some of the comments that Dave made, if I can just go over them briefly, I won't go over every single one of them. Dave is pretty thorough. He asked us just to add, to measure off what the setbacks are from these buildings to the actual lot lines. They're pretty far away from the lot lines, but he just asked us to show the measurement, whether it's 100 feet or 300 feet. He wants us to show it, that's fine. He says, "In our opinion, the plan meets the intent and the requirements of the Muppet District." He asked us to consider revising the driveway at the existing house. Currently, the driveway is on the right side of the house, comes right out of Hancock Street, and currently, or previously, the residents would essentially back out on Hancock Street, pretty close to the intersection. So they've asked, he's asked that we perhaps widen the driveway or make a little turnaround next to the house so that people who are at the house can turn around in the driveway and then pull out on Hancock Street. Just increases safety, that's something we can easily certainly do. Traffic, he reviewed the traffic memorandum that was filed, and he noted four points. The number of daily vehicle trips has been reduced from 168 trips associated with the 2019 plan to now only 80 trips, basically half of the trips. However, he says, "The elimination of the number of vehicle trips previously associated with Lobster Barn would further reduce those daily number of trips in overall study area." And as MDM said, de minimis change, should be real noticeable change in the number of vehicles to what already existed when the Lobster Barn was open. Driveway sightlines exceed the minimum required travel speed, so when you pull out of the driveway and looking left or right, as you know, that part of the street is relatively straight. And the recommended intersection design has been provided and shown on the site plan. And what he means by that, if you recall, the fire department had requested to make sure that the entrance, we would pull back, we have an island going down the middle of the driveway, so it's a one-way in, kind of like what Glanville Way is, one-way out, but we pulled it back a little bit from Hancock Street, so it's easy for a fire truck when they turned in, they don't have to kind of make sure they don't bump over the curb, it's pulled back. So that's just little details that we brought forward from the previously approved plan. The stormwater design comments, he had mentioned in that question, said soil testing has not been completed and is needed substantiated to design. I said, "How can that be true? How can we design drainage without soil testing?" And he said, "Oh, no, you already did the soil testing. You did that when you did the original plan in 2019." So odds are the soil hasn't changed. He goes, "I'm just telling you, you need to reconfirm that when you actually start digging again. No problem. We'll do that as part of construction when that day comes." The plans and details, he wants to make sure their consistency of design information. Roof drain material should be noted as H2A loading required on paved driveway. I learned something new today. All that means is that the piping that's used underneath the pavement is, it has to be a certain type of pipe that can withstand the weight of trucks or cars that go over the driveway, and he just wants us to add a note saying that this is that correct type of pipe. Going through utilities, it's serviced by municipal water and sewer. We still would have to go to the sewer board and the water board for permission. The water board right now recently lifted their moratorium, but it's kind of unclear about what projects are going to be approved. At worst case, we would be required to drop a well, but for four warehouse buildings, the amount of water used here will be pretty small. Be basically a bathroom in each of the warehouses, four buildings. Confirmation of gas service is where it's located on Hancock Street. We're going to add that to the plan. He said, "Consider the use of underground utilities instead of overhead utilities." Grading, he just noted in one area, the number 175. It says 176, it should say 175, so that's just a typo. We're going to fix that. Landscaping, he said, "The planning board should determine if the proposed architecture conforms to the intent of 17539B6, which is the New England-style streetscape architecture." And our response, for this plan as it was in 2019, is there is no streetscape here. You can't see these buildings there. As I said, the closest one is 350 feet away around the corner. So there'd be basically typical warehouse construction with landscaping on the front as is shown on the plan. The lighting plan appears to be acceptable, he says. The existing hedgerow along the subtly property line should be protected as a buffer for the budding property. That's our plan. We're going to keep that hedgerow there. And street trees are, along the length of the driveway, have been provided, as well as plantings for the front of those buildings. Plant materials appear to be acceptable for the site. Again, we carried forward a lot, and I think you're familiar with Kelly Engineering's work, and they're pretty thorough. And then he just notes that the applicant has noted, has indicated that a notice of intent will be filed with the Conservation Commission for work within the buffer zones. Changes required by their review may need to be submitted to the planning board for review if there's any impact to the change in the plans, which is typical and not an issue for us. If there's any change required by the Conservation Commission that makes us adjust a building or location of pavement, we would notify the planning board, and if necessary, would come back to you for review of the amended plan if it was significant in any way. In sum, Dave, and then they went over the waivers. They recommended approval of the waivers with the exception of the waiver of the street profile, which Dave talked to Garrett, and we have no problem. That will add another sheet showing the street profile. But there's no need to have sidewalks, no need to have granite curbing all the way down, all the things I mentioned earlier. And he suggested any approval by the board should include the following conditions. Number one, soil testing will be completed prior to the start of construction. The results of the testing will be provided to Norwood Engineering for review to substantiate the proposed stormwater system design, I mentioned that earlier, and that will be done at the start of construction. Number two, the lighting company will confirm as part of the application process for building permits that the proposed lighting complies with our lighting law, outdoor lighting law. Again, we submitted the photometric plan that shows that it does, but we can do more at the time, you know, before a building permit's issued. Third, a copy of the order conditions, if issued by the Conservation Commission, should be provided to the planning board, and any required revisions be added to the plan set that is approved by the planning board. Yes. And then number four is a copy of the complete NPDES notice of intent will be provided to the planning board. Compliance with this document should be monitored by the Conservation and the Planning Board, or they designate. No problem with that. That's. No problem with that, that's a plan that, it's a filing that we have to make. And it would be usually done hand-to-hand with the Conservation notice of intent. So that in essence is the plan. It conforms with the zoning bylaw, the Muppet District, reduces the amount of traffic to, again, that which was already there with, for the Lobster Barn, essentially. By buying the extra land, it gave us the flexibility to pull the driveway away from Randall Street, which is a concern back three years ago. Now it's been addressed. We have fewer buildings and a lot more, you know, basically Tree Line Boulevard. So Garrett is here, Mike is here. If there's any questions, both in operation or in engineering, I hope the board will look favorably on this, and we would then, the two engineering firms would then update the plans to fill in the details that Dave requested. And, you know, a building permit can be issued until Dave signs off. We are not trying to rush it, but, you know, I don't want to, we have to go to the Conservation Commission after this is approved. So that wouldn't, that's going to take us two or three months to go through that process also. So happy to answer any questions, but I hope the planning board looks favorably on this project.
At this point, I'd like to read into the record. This is Bruce Hughes, planning board, from John Stone, the director of the Department of Public Works. Mr. Hughes, the Abington Sewer Department has reviewed your request for information regarding the planning board hearing scheduled for October second, two thousand and twenty-three, and has the following comments. Nine forty Hancock Street, this proposal located on Assessors Plan fifty-seven, Lot one nine ten eleven, must be approved by the Board of Sewer Commissioners that are regularly scheduled.
Open this for board comments?
I have a few. First of all, the site plan requires inclusion of elevation plans. Am I missing these?
We did not submit the elevation plans, we can certainly do that of the proposed buildings.
We did it five hundred, required them to five hundred estimate, so.
No worries.
So I guess I'm trying to understand a few pieces of this. I'm on sheet seven, and there's some bold lines kind of out back of building one and two and the corner of the infiltration system.
Garrett's turning to sheet seven.
So just for the record, Garrett Horstfall with Kelly Engineering Group. That's actually a retaining wall, and it has been designed to comply with the updated conservation rules and regs, the applicable buffer zones, which allow thirty-five-foot, leave no disturb or no impervious. But they allow retaining wall, it does not require building permits, it's less than four feet. It would not require such permit, but that is what that line does.
Are you proposing any restrictions on what type of uses could be used in the building?
Not proposing anything other than what the zoning board or the zoning bylaw already requires. There's certain, as you know, delineated use chart there that what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Yeah, I mean, because there's also floodplains, wetlands district as well, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, we're in the floodplain, which half the town's in the floodplain, overly district. We're not in the wetlands.
Right.
We're not in a FEMA flood zone. So, yeah, I mean, you know, like, for example, you're not allowed to have a gas station in the Muppet District.
But there's also restrictions about storage of, you know, chemicals and fertilizers.
Things that could leach or whatever.
All that sort of stuff. So, I mean, is that something that we're going to need to have special language about, or?
No, I mean, I don't believe so. Feeny Brothers is going to, well, they own it under Hancock, Abington LLC. They own the property, so they would own a problem if they leased to someone who created an issue.
Regarding, I know this is, you're still going conservation. Conservation doesn't have an ANRAD in its records in the DEP or database, is that being done again?
We're doing a full wetlands delineation, it's, it's, ANRAD's not necessary. You can do it as a first step, which is basically we run and agree where the line is before you go to design. We've had this engineered and delineated more than once.
Yeah, I mean.
They're only good for three years of the wetlands.
Yeah. The only reason I bring this up is because it's really wedged in there good. You're really kind of threading a needle when it comes to the wetlands of both sides where you're looking to develop. So, you know, in some cases, the fifty-foot buffer is right up in the back door. Thirty-five-foot buffer is, you know, not far away.
Yep.
As well, so. With those common parking areas, how are those pitched?
So there's a catch basin in between three and four. So those will be graded away from the doors to be collected into the drainage system that has all proper water quality and device treatment prior to going to recharge BMP. And similarly, the further northern loading areas pitched to a catch basin on the southerly side of the plan there. But they'll all be, have.
Deep-sunk hoodie catch basins.
Water quality values prior to a infiltration system.
All right, so even when you give it out to the street, those are pitched away from the wetlands and towards drainage and, okay.
All paved surfaces and all roof areas are collected and gone through a recharge BMP for the stormwater handbook.
Okay. And the infiltration system next to proposed building one? The discharge pipe is within thirty-five-foot no disturb?
So we're going to coordinate all that with the Conservation Commission. I do believe they allow for utility construction within that buffer zone.
Yeah.
Just to get out via gravity, you have to get to that elevation. If we could pull it up, we would, but just given the site elevation, it has to be that close.
Yeah, all right. Do we have any rules about removing stone walls? No, they can do it as part of their projects.
Are you talking about a historical stone wall?
Well, I mean, I think, is there a difference between historical stone walls and non-historical stone walls?
Yes. The stone wall around my house is not a historical stone wall. I would have to, I think it would have to have been included on a list of historic places in order for there to be an issue about removing it.
Okay. Again, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to figure out is, we have a very similar project a half mile down the road. Why do we need a whole new one to tear down all sorts of different woods and environment, have environmental impact when there's a whole, it's time to fully build out yet because they don't even have tenants yet. So, I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out is why can't, why do we need two of these?
It's zoned for this, for one thing. And if you're, I don't, well, you probably weren't on the board. Several years ago, this was approved for multifamily apartment housing. I can't remember how many units were approved, you know?
Supposedly two hundred.
Two hundred units brought on this property. It's a large piece of property, but it does have, it has the river that goes through, the wetlands thing, which complicates development. And as I said, we tried to simplify it on this one, and now it's basically all the upland that's on the east side of the river, west side of Chestnut Street.
It's, this is, this, you know. Mike Sheen, Director of Real Estate, in Abington. We've run it down to four buildings, but we do have a demand because not only are we subcontractors to the utilities, to keep up with our work, we have to subcontract to others. And one of the things they say to us is, "Can you provide us a lay-down yard? Can you provide us a garage to store our stuff?" And then also, we have to take from the utilities the pipe. If you don't take the pipe ahead of the job, we don't get the job. So we have a demand for storage for pipe, which some's got to stay inside, some from the outside. We also have a demand from our subcontractors that need a place to put there. But basically, as Sharon said, box trucks. And so we, as a company, do have that demand. And we want to provide it because they have a little bit more control over not only their work, but also what we receive from the utilities. Because we get an account to the utilities for every piece of pipe. And it becomes an issue when they tell us they sent us a hundred thousand feet of pipe, but you only laid out eighty thousand, uh, eight, uh, feet of pipe in this job. Where's the other twenty thousand pipe? This way we can control it. So we do have the demand. It is less than it was when we did four years ago. And also, one of the reasons is, is the interest rates, cost of construction. Right now, this is for us a better project, and that's where we're at today.
And I would also just point a reference. Differentiate the Fury Project, some of those buildings up there are much larger. This proposal for an eighty or a hundred thousand square foot building up there, the total square footage of the buildings here is twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. So they're four smaller buildings for smaller users. It's not the size and scope that the Fury Project is.
Which buildings will Feeny Brothers be?
We'll take the first one as you command, building one. So we'll take that one, and then the other ones will be for lease.
And are there any controls with what gets put in those lay-down yards?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have controls. There'll be no materials or anything. This is strictly for equipment that we need for the jobs, tools, that type of materials, and piping. We're not looking to, that's why we eliminated the lay-down yard. We purchased a property in Rockland, which we're using as a lay-down yard, more conducive than this property away from wetlands and whatever, you know, what we were speaking about earlier. So that lay-down yard that was going to have materials, it's not going to be there. It's not going to be materials for this.
Now, we ran into this question with another property in town. Is there a difference between vehicle storage and vehicle repairs? And some people don't seem to understand that.
We don't do repairs. We have our shops.
Okay. Not changing oils, not changing?
No, no. We will obviously store some, some gas and oils for, you know, some of the hand, hand equipment that'll be used, you know, the gas-powered rooms and things like that. But there'll be no changing of any oil that we use.
Has the fire department had chances to lay out, are they cool with it?
They get a copy of the site plan, and really, the entrance design is what was previously proposed. Proposed and approved, the only difference really is that it's now two hundred and fifty feet away.
More just a little bend. There's also a little bend, so.
Oh, yeah.
Turnaround and everything.
Just let me say one thing on the fire department. We met at the fire department, and this, this is the entrance here now. This is going to remain so that they can come in if they have to get behind these properties, and then they'll have this access.
He's pointing to the car path it's in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they have access, we've given them access to get there.
And if you also recall, at the time, Chief Nuttall was happy that we were putting hydrants out towards the end of our development because they wanted to be able to tap into them if there are any future forest fires, which they've had a couple out there. So it just gives them access to the backland.
All right, thank you for now.
So the original plan, we were going to do some mitigation work out on the corner to slow the cars coming from Randolph Street onto Hancock Street. Is that something we can still do?
If there's a need to do anything, sure. I think the.
I think it would greatly help one of the neighbors that live on the corner, who's going to do some sort of mitigation. We had talked about it, and it was going to be John Stone. You were the traffic guy at that, that hearing before, whether it's a rumble strip.
Correct me if I'm wrong, can I maybe? This is one of the intersections, I think, that's under review. It's early in the review stage, is that right?
I think so.
So I think there are plans that the town's going to undertake with that intersection. I know the other intersection at Chestnut Street and Hancock Street is pretty much at design stage ready to go. Yeah, they're going to put a roundabout there, much like the other end of Chestnut Street.
Could save a lot of money if they just cut the bushes on the side of it, it would have been all set.
So I guess there's got to be some sort of mitigation you can do in the meantime to.
Yeah, right.
Slow cars down from whipping around onto Hancock Street, which has been that way for, since the end of time.
There was talking more quite like a rumble strip.
Yeah, even striping.
I think you're talking more about where you can't just turn, you have to kind of stop.
Well, even if enough to slow the cars down coming from Holbrook onto Hancock Street.
There's a turn on the right. There was, yeah, we're talking about striping, you know, like a, keeping the cars away from the curb with striping, however effective that may or may not be.
Right.
Talking about rumble strips, and can we, do we have the authority to put rumble strips there?
Is that, that state, right, that road, is it that far down, is it?
I honestly don't know.
One thirty-nine is.
Right, but is it that far down the state? I know we discussed it the last time, and there were some proposals for it.
Yeah.
And I think you're right with, they're going to redesign that intersection. Who knows when that's going to be?
Yeah. We looked at, we took a long, hard look at that because if you recall, there was a, again, the driveway was seventy-five feet off.
Right, and we, you know, we were accused of, you know, going to create some.
Yeah, the concern at the time, legitimate concern.
And it's still a concern, even though you have to driveway down further.
Right, well, there was two concerns. One was cars coming from the Holbrook direction, taking that curve and potentially having an, uh, uh.
Right.
Running into someone trying to pull in or out of our driveway, which is only seventy-five feet around the corner back then. Now, as I said, it's two hundred and fifty feet away. So that gets really relieved. The other part was, if people are trying to leave our property and take a left to go to Randall Street, could they do that? Because the line of cars in the morning backs up. And so the, back then, they had suggested hatching it to keep that, you know, mind the box, don't block the box type of thing.
But common sense would be, you're not going to take a left out of that in the morning.
Right, and well, now you're two hundred and fifty feet away, so now you've got.
And it's still, they're backed up, close to the country store in the morning.
Yeah, at that time in the morning, which, again.
Which common sense would be, you don't go that way.
Right, and these guys, you're not going to get a lot of traffic coming out of this property.
Especially, it'll be early, right?
Yeah, I mean, if these guys are getting.
So I guess my point is, can you find some sort of a mitigation in the meantime just to slow the cars down? I know it's, it's, you move the driveway down, it's not your impact, but for some of the neighbors, it would.
We could ask MDM to look at that again and see what they would suggest within the town's ability. Yeah, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't.
Right, but again, the last time we were going to do something.
Yep.
If I may, the rumble's review, rumble strips are going to be on our property, so the drivers weren't pulling out, they have to. And that was the mitigation we had discussed, and also a flashing light at that time, at that intersection. But we have moved it down.
Right.
And it's clearly put rumble strips on our, on our property, so they don't speed out.
Right. And I know we also, we also talked about coming around that corner for some, some sort of mitigation.
You know, one of the things was when this individual came to us about this property, you know, that it was for sale, is one of the reasons was we knew that was a concern.
Right.
This way, it was the opportunity to pull the way down.
Right, I get it.
And we paid top dollar for it, so.
It still would be nice to, to help that intersection a little bit.
Whatever we can do, the help that allows us to do it as well.
Mr. Collins, Mr. Rangel?
A couple of questions on drainage. Sheet six might be helpful.
We asked them about drainage, is that what you said?
So no particular where we have a drain line running from south of building one. And it looks like it's, it'd be a catch basin being on the side of the roadway that's running around into the wetlands area. Yeah, that way, yeah, the back of the, yeah, right there. So can I understand that one a little better?
So that's actually an outlet control, control structure. So the upstream manhole, that is the outlet control structure from the recharge system. The only catch basin feeding that recharge system, I believe, is the double catch basin at the top of the, at the bottom of the driveway there. And then there's a catch basin on the plain north side in the parking lot as well. So that pipe outfeeding into the wetland system there is just the outlet control structure. That's after everything's gone through the recharge system, the water quality device. So inside there, there's just a baffle to, you know, control it coming out. So there is no direct feed out there without going through the stormwater system first.
Okay. The drain lines between buildings two and three. So this one runs down into roadway, right? And then kind of hits like a distribution perhaps? Yeah, and it's running in both directions, that one. Yeah, it comes down to the roadway, yeah.
So everything. So everything, so the, these two catch basins.
Well, the specific question is, is so you're running down to the roadway.
That's actually called the roadway up into the infiltration. Right, the pipe is back pitched into this subsurface system and the outlet control device on this.
Okay, that clarifies that. Okay, so the drainage is.
Yeah, so part of the, the balancing act here is feeding both wetland systems so you're not drying out. So what we've done is we've matched or reduced the flow of volumes to that wetland system as well as that, this wetland system. So there's one, basically recreating the current drainage patterns. So you're feeding one wetland system with this pipe and the other wetland system with that pipe to match or decrease the flows, you know, for the stormwater standards.
Okay, okay.
When I say the water's flowing out, it was, it was on plan pointing on one closed down, we know that. So you're also an engineer.
Or an engineer.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just, just a small question. There was one, one light post, putting out thirteen thousand lumens and it's down by the last, by the end parking lot, down, close to the bottom. It's down, uh. I just wonder why that one, that one pole, cause it's, is it twenty feet tall or fifteen feet tall? Cause the property behind there is only two feet higher, so. Let me try to look. See that, back out the hammerhead down the bottom? Is it L, L tubes?
It looks, yeah, L two, it looks like it's, you know, putting out the standard foot candles, you know, consistent with the rest of the plan.
Well, it's, it's putting out thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety and the other ones are putting out ten thousand. So that, I just wonder why there was a jump in that one and that's the one that might be exposed the most to the residents.
We can, I can have the lighting engineers review that and get the lighting down to be more consistent with the other poles, poles on the site. They might have been trying to limit, they may have been trying to limit the number of poles throughout. And just to get the foot candles needed, but we can get it down to similar levels with the other, other light poles as well.
Well, you have to have something to respond to, that's what we got, so that's good.
Just to, according to photometric plan, there's zero, it goes down to zero foot candles well before it gets even to the rear property lines of Hancock Street.
Yeah, I understand the lumen thing. We all know that it really doesn't affect anybody, but if reality is when you see the fixture from your house, if, the good thing now is these new fixtures, the, the LEDs are raised a little bit so you can't see the element there.
Right.
That's the concern with if they're fifteen, twenty feet tall and you're in your house.
Yep.
If the beam is, if the beam of the light, granted, maybe there's no lumens, but I can see it. You, you can, you gotta pull my shade down even though there's no lumens. But, yeah, that's what I mean, you have a visual line of, of. I think you, you've answered this in one way. The nice guy thing that's, everybody's taken care of that and the lumens you've taken care of that. It's just where any, if any, what do you call it, not blinds, but you know, shields.
Yeah.
If, if there any need for shields, an extra shield, just to make sure the glowing light. I don't know what color you're gonna paint the buildings, but they could be, you know, real nuisance if they're repaid.
So all of the lights proposed along these, this end of driveway, there's one light poles proposed here, all have shields provided with them? I can add a shield on this one as well. I just noticed it doesn't have a shield as well, but we can add a shield on that. I think it's fair enough to add one as well there, it's civil position.
Yeah.
So all of the other lights along the driveway, they have shields with them and we can add a shield on that as well.
All right, that's cool.
Okay, back to drainage. So can you help me understand the drain floor between, of the, the line between buildings three and four that runs out to the street and then down to the basin?
So the, the drain line run starts here, picking up the roof and the collection system, so you have a catch basin, catch basin. It's all flowing towards this infiltration basin, the water quality device prior to discharge there. And then you have a outlet control structure, a flare in section, and that, there'll be an emergency spillway provided here that, that feeds that wetland system as well. So basically your drainage watershed for this is roughly where my scale is right now, further down, it's off that way. So all of that impervious area gets routed through that infiltration basin.
Okay, and the spillway is a, is a contingency for what?
So the spillway is six inches above the hundred year storm elevation. We have about a foot of freeboard above that elevation. So the spillway is six inches below the top of berm and a hundred year storm elevation is about a foot below the top of berm. The spillway is, if there's ever a, you know, need for it to be active, it should not, never be active unless we have, you know, two hundred year storm or some, some, which is required in the stormwater handbook as part of a spit sales fail safe component as part of a stormwater pond.
And what kind of ongoing maintenance might be necessary for the basin, the spillway for that general area?
So you're required to expect it after, I believe, two and a half inches of rain or inch and a half. So they're all required to drain within seventy-two hours. You have to maintain these outlet control structures to make sure they're, you know, free flowing, no debris's blocking them. And, you know, regularly maintained essentially, so there's no trash debris that's collected through these systems. And, you know, just maintain the edges. So there's an a- access path, a fifteen foot bench around this basin, so you can have clear access with a, you know, lawnmower, you know, small block cat, the like, if you need to do, you know, main, routine maintenance to the pond.
Okay, and the property owner is responsible for that review and inspection and maintenance?
Correct, so within the stormwater report, there's a whole operation and maintenance plan, you know, which includes, you know, cleaning the catch basins out twice annually as well as the stormwater, water quality devices have to be vacuum pumped with a, a truck as well. There's a whole maintenance inspection log list in that report as well that they're, you know, required to maintain the property as a part of.
I'm sorry, what report is that in?
To the stormwater management report.
Okay. See that?
It's.
No one engineering has seen it.
They'll make a lot more sense of it than I would.
Well, and it does raise another point, is the stormwater management permit that you'll need for the project?
You welcome to swing by and read a different?
No, because it's, this is exactly, if you have site plan review, these engineers have reviewed it, so you don't go to a center permit for stormwater. Cause this is stormwater.
Okay, so where's the management plan in terms of construction management and tree removal and all that fun stuff?
So I believe you're referring to the, the NIPD's permit for disturbance over an acre?
Yep.
So once we have a contractor selected, that'll be filed, filed to the operator of the permit and have to upload it to the EPA's website. So once Mike has selected a site contractor or a general contractor, we'll fill out a paperwork for them. They'll upload it to the website with a plan to accompany the stormwater pollution prevention plan. That'll all be filed with the EPA and permit issued.
Liz, don't we have a role in that with our?
You just don't want to manage a permitting authority.
Yeah.
And the, the design of everything that he just said is typical. If this was a subdivision, it's the same thing. It's the same, you have the same management cleanup procedures, the same spillways, all of it, this is typical. And I think it speaks to the fact that no one engineering has any concerns or effect on the design itself. So I know that we're talking a lot of high level engineering there, but I just want people who are listening to know that there's nothing unique about the design of when water goes in the catch basin, where is it going? And I think Garrett mentioned, one of the things that we have to show to your engineer and also to the conservation commission is that we're not starving the wetlands. Right now, when it rains there, the water flows into the wetlands, left or right, north or south. And Garrett has to make that calculation of what's the existing condition. And then when we pave areas and inject the water in those catch basins, that water's gotta get to that same ending point. And that's why some of the water, catch basin takes it north and some of it takes it south because it's going into different areas of wetlands, so that we're not changing the environment.
Liz, did our tree bylaw get approved by D A G?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So as you know, there's some requirements to that too. Did we do any tree surveys to figure out what's coming down?
Yeah.
The extent of the clearing?
Yeah, and there's, except that not in the areas of construction, cause those are coming down.
We still said we need to know what trees are coming down. If there are large trees, we need to know what are coming down.
We, I, I know we were talking about doing this with the locating the, was it six inches or more? I think it was, right?
Yeah.
Or over six inches, a phrase in the clean bylaw. If that doesn't show on one of the sheets, we'll, we'll add a sheet.
And then it's also part of the. That's also, I think, part of the.
Sorry, the tree replacement plan, you said?
Yeah, it's also the stormwater, I think it's also part of the stormwater permit. Liz, how does that work? Do we actually get a, an application that we see or is that done some other way?
So it can be done as part of their application for a site plan or subdivision? But there's other stuff that.
Yeah.
Needs to be done and I, I still need to get a copy of the O and M plan and all of that at the end of the day.
Yep, the, we discussed this tree by, this has been in the works for several months, so I apologize. We discussed this tree bylaw, a new tree bylaw. And I know there was language in there that was unique, it's a new bylaw. But there was something about trees outside of the construction area, you know? I, I will look at it. We will, we'll get back to try to follow up with whatever that is required and make sure we.
And then you and I can work on the, the requirements of the stormwater bylaw, what I need for our files. I mean, I get the O and M plan is, is basically gonna be a conservation thing.
It's in the, it's in the stormwater management report.
Oh, okay, all right.
We already have that now.
Great, the, the point of the tree thing. Not to harp on it too much, is we wanted to have this part of the narrative, what acreage of trees are coming down? What type are we talking of these, you know, saplings, this old growth, second growth? Just a general idea of what is coming down and what the area need, what is the construction area?
Right.
And then what is being done to replace them as much as possible, so we retain the canopy as much as possible?
No, and I agree, this conservation has a similar bylaw, but theirs is like five inch trees, yours is six inch trees.
Yeah, I mean, they approved theirs after we approved our town bylaw. I don't know what they were thinking, but.
Yeah, we, we have to make it jive.
But I mean, there, there are some stuff in here for, that we require that isn't here. So, I mean, that's part of the application process.
We'll get that, this is the, I think the first one at this tree bylaw, so we'll try to see what, what applies.
But also the elevations.
The building, yeah, I've already read that.
Although I think the people that set the bar marking trees was the one up by the, it's built up by the railroad station on, off.
One seventy-six Wheel Street?
No, you don't, down by the railroad with the elderly.
Oh, Summer Street?
Summer, yes, on the other side of there. That large development that was, it's been in there for years, actually wood, wood.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The wood, they had, it was amazing. I mean, they had marked out almost every tree that was out, was out everywhere, marked all the paths and everything.
That was a tree nursery, back in the day. Yeah.
Yeah, they really marked everything.
That was unique, yeah.
All right, so elevations and the tree bylaw.
I have building elevation plans, we'll check with our traffic engineer, buddy, any traffic coming, suggestions. Make sure we have a, call out a shield on that light and then we'll, we'll review the application of the tree bylaw.
Yeah, if you go, the same slope is over here as well.
And all the other little details that Dave mentioned, those will have the address that you mentioned.
So just for clarification, so this falls within the jurisdiction of the stormwater management rules and regs?
Yes, cause it would disturb more than an acre.
Right, and we've seen erosion and sediment control plans, cooperation and maintenance plans, we've seen those things?
Can I just, are you talking about stormwater management D E P regulations or stormwater Abington bylaw?
Our bylaw.
Okay, and I believe there's an exemption that we don't file separately because.
You're a major site plan, you can file it together.
Right, the site plan review is the same thing you do. The stormwater bylaw was, and one, one reason it was created was to fill in the gap for those projects that for whatever reason didn't require site plan review. So if it, if it didn't require site plan review, you had to go get a stormwater management permit at the local level. If you're doing site plan review, it's essentially the same thing. If it was a subdivision or a site plan, we're reviewing stormwater management, we're required under D E P standards for this plan. So it's just Department of the Redundancy Department, you know, we don't wanna file it twice. But yes, the O and M operation and maintenance plan is in the stormwater management manual that was submitted to no one engineering. Copies are available. We don't usually submit ten copies of it.
No, you give me three and one goes to the town clerks, one stays in my file and one goes to the engineer.
Stormwater management permit application shall include submission of an erosion and sediment control plan to the stormwater permitting authority, which is us. So that's, that has been submitted.
I don't have an erosion and sediment plan.
There's, on the grading plan, it shows all the erosion.
Is it on the grading plan?
Yes. And further details will be provided when the, when the NIPD's, you know, stormwater pollution prevention plan is developed with the site contractor relative to trailer store, trailer, construction trailer fencing and the like.
And likewise, stormwater management permit application shall include a submission of operation maintenance plan to the stormwater permitting authority.
That's included in here.
Okay, so these are things that we should have.
Yep, that's included in here and that's on there.
And more importantly, these are things that Dave would have seen and reviewed.
He has, yep.
You have, what you just asked for, it's already in there, been reviewed. That's not one of, that local bylaw fills that gap for some sort of project for whatever reason that they're site under. For example, if we were going out, if somebody owned a lot of land and was just clearing some land for whatever reason, they don't have to do site plan reviews, they're not building anything, but they're clearing it. Once they clear more than an acre, stormwater bylaw kicks in, they get a file there. So that's, that was that, that gap in the regulations that this local bylaw fixes. If you're already doing site plan or subdivision, you're already doing stormwater management.
All right, any further border comment? All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public, public comment?
Can you take the, get up to the podium and give your name and address, please?
My name is Paul Moloch, I live at one fifty-two Presidential Drive. I have no financial interest in this project at all, but I, I know when you're reviewing an application from anybody, you're looking, dealing with them for the first time. I, I've done business with Feeny Brothers for twenty-five years in a banking relationship, going back to, to Fleet, B V A and Webster Bank, they were a customer of mine for many years. And during that timeframe, their reputation is like second to none. They do all utility work and the utility company's margin of error for mistakes is like nil. And their reputation is on the line every day. And their first generation, Greg and Brendan Feeny from Ireland. And they, and they have excellent reputation, do great work. So whatever agreement you work out with them, I'm a hundred percent confident they will live up to.
Sir? Paul Ferris, ten twenty Hancock Street.
Just a question on the light mitigation. When was that study done? Was it done in sometime, it was done in the fall when there's no tree, no leaves. My property's here to basically sit in the back, right in front of that facility.
The, the, the light study, the photometric plan is, is done irrelevant of the time here. It's based on the, the height, as I mentioned, the height of the pole, the type, and if there's a shield. So it, it says assume there is no tree at all.
At all.
What, how, how far away does that light go? A great example of current light technology is, or comparison, if you go down Memorial Field at a football game, they have the old lights up there. And you can see it lights up the football field, but it also lights up beyond. But if you go to a soccer game at the turf field, the new lights with the shields, you can see that the field is lit, but the woods are dark, right? That's where the shields are so effective nowadays and that's what the photometric design is for.
Okay, all right. One other, I don't believe, I still believe there's gonna be an issue with traffic on Hancock Street coming into that facility, into that area, coming around that corner. I, I think it's just a general problem, period. This is just gonna add to it. And you also specify there'll be no big rigs, no sixteen, no eighteen-wheeler coming into that facility at all. Well, the only reason is, I'm saying, is trucks are gonna go in there. I don't know how they're gonna get out, trying to get out, get out, and get on the hand for the entire facility.
Turn it on down the end.
Down the end, yeah.
We, we don't expect that. If it happens, it would be months a year, if they want to deliver us, like they said, a hundred thousand feet of bike, it would probably come in on the tractor trailer. If it's not, a comment occurs.
Okay, good luck trying to get out back in Hancock Street, but that's what I get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Please.
My husband and I, Lee Greenwood, 959 Hancock Street. We were here last meeting, uh, four years ago, and they wanted to make the exit seventy-five feet directly across from my house. Now they're moving it even closer to our house. I, you said there's no traffic impact, but your trucks go out every single day to work.
Yeah, I didn't say that, ma'am. I didn't say that.
Well, somebody said there'd be really no, it would be an equipment traffic impact between the lobster barn and this. Lobster barn had cars, cars coming in and out, minivans with fish dinners. This is larger trucks, like what's parked right around the corner on Quincy Street. They're big trucks. They're not eighteen-wheelers, but they're gonna come out every morning, 'cause you go to work, gotta be on the site at seven. And they're gonna be making noise on our street, as well as the street is not live at all. And we don't even have curbs on our street. They gave us a little thing of tar, so I do foresee problems coming up, so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Would any of your opponents respond to the, oh, sorry.
Should I come up for it?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Hi, my name's Matt Malone. I live at 932 Hancock Street. The one question I had, is, is this place, it's like for emergency storage, so it will be a twenty-four-seven type of operation?
I can address that.
Yeah, please.
No, uh, this would just be for a contract. This week, kind of, as we spoke to the last one, decided not to use that if we get a call, that's twenty-four, uh, need twenty-four. Cause that came up in zoning board meetings, we decided that that will be the case, yeah.
Yeah, please do. And then the, the other kind of thought I have, I don't know if this is a definitive answer, is how, how can you run a traffic impact statement when you don't know what the other garages will be rented for? You, you don't know what their kind of oper, their, their day-to-day operation will be, so it's kind of a guess to kind of compare that to the lobster barn, which is, is open Wednesday through Sunday. It was closed a few days a week, it was closed seasonally, so it's, I mean, it's hard to compare, is all I'm just suggesting. You don't know what's in those buildings, so we really don't have anything to go off of until we have a better idea of what's gonna be back here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great point. Um, the way they do it is they use the IT that, you know, international, it's a manual, whatever.
Isn't it? It's based on the allowed uses in the zone, and based on traffic data from all the different types of uses, um, not only in Massachusetts, but across the country. So obviously, if you have a six thousand square foot restaurant, it's different traffic than a six thousand square foot warehouse. And, uh, in this zone, we're limited, no retail uses, um, this is proposed as warehouse uses. And just so you know more like what Feeney does, Feeney Brothers particularly, um, you know, in the morning, you're right, their employees are gonna show up in their cars, or their pickup trucks. And they're gonna park at the, at the, uh, building, and then they're gonna get in the box truck and leave, and they're gone for the day. Many times, they leave the box truck at the site on the road. You, you go by, you know, at night or during the day, you'll see Feeney Brothers' trucks parked on job sites. Because it's just easier, more efficient to leave the equipment there and not bring it back and forth every, every day. So you're not gonna see, you know, everything going in and out is not gonna be, the majority's gonna be trucks. When you have carpenters, I mean, I, I rent my building to a plumber, and he's got a van. He's got a small box truck and a van. And, you know, his, that's what I see every day. So this district, again, restricts the type of uses that generate, um, heavy traffic uses, and it only allows the low-impact traffic. And will there be more traffic coming off this property than there was? Yes, because nothing's coming off this property now. Yes, um, lobster barn has a different timing of their traffic, when they're only open certain days, and when they are open certain days, they're busiest during the time you're gonna eat and order your food. These guys typically, a plumber, a carpenter, Feeney Brothers, is gonna be leaving at six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. And you're not gonna hear, you know, the, the large truck engine starting up, because they don't have those. So change is always different. We use professional traffic guys to try to project what to expect. We, we try to be as conservative, meaning overestimate as much as possible, and design for the worst-case scenario, so that there aren't issues like that. If you have any issues, I'd invite you, as I mentioned, that house is staying there, and there's going, that's gonna be the office. So you can always go talk to them if there's a problem, and I appreciate the words of Mr. Malick, um, about, you know, the quality and the history of this company. So please, if you have a problem, knock on the door.
Any other further comment, any further public comment? Anything coming from the board?
Yeah, one, one final question, um, again, from the stormwater, uh, rules and regulations. There's a section here for access permission. To the extent permitted by Massachusetts law, the SWPA or designated or a third-party inspector may enter, uh, upon privately-owned property with the written consent of the property owner for the express and narrow purposes or form of their duties under these rules and regulations, et cetera. So, uh, if we don't have that written authorization, would there be any problem getting it?
Conservation would have the same ability. I mean, it's private property, you're right. If there is a, an issue, a neighbor calls because there's a flooding issue of some sort, a drain's backed up. We're gonna get a call from either the Building Department, Conservation Department, or, or the TPW. And of course, they're gonna come on site and make sure it gets repaired, like any other site, whether it's Target, whether it's Abington Town Hall. I mean, we do know there's two retention ponds out back here. One retention pond out back here. So, yes, that, it's, it's up to the, in this case, because it's private property, as opposed to a subdivision, which the town would own the road and the drainage system. We own the drainage system, so it behooves us to, if litter blows into the drainage, the, the retention pond, we have to clean it up. Much like we do right across the street and right behind this building. It happens all the time. You don't see it, because we don't put flashing lights on when we do it. It just, it's part of maintenance of your property. One of the things Garrett mentioned, you know, we're in New England, so when it snows, you put down sand on your driveway and on your parking lots. That sand eventually will get washed into the catch basin, and eventually it sits in the bottom of the catch basins. That's why the O and M operation and maintenance says you gotta go in and clean out the catch basins once, twice a year. All the catch basins. You see the town do it with their truck up and down the streets usually once a year, and you see it on private property. Well, you may not see it, but it happens on private property, where they clean out their own drainage systems.
I only have one thing, I wanna back up what Dave said here, because he used a lot of shoulds and would be nice. On the site design, you, you incorporated the lobster hut as going to be the, uh, as the main office. It really does deserve like a one-in-twenty plan, uh, to look at the, what you're gonna do there, because that's, that's gonna be the face of the, of the place. So I would like to see parking, the landscaping.
And I think he asked for that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
But he said should, I'd like to say yes.
Yeah, we, no, we would do that, because we have to show them how we wanna redo the driveway layout, and doing that will show in a large, long of that area. Yep.
Cause that's, I'm sure that's gonna make a huge difference.
Yeah, and, and I think, again, we're, we're making it a tree-lined driveway. We don't have to, but we, that's what they do.
Well, back there you get it set. It's just, it's out front, this is your face.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, out front. You're gonna, you're gonna drive by and see this entrance with, with trees, and like the num, the address number.
Yeah.
And, oh, wonder what's back there. It's, it's nice. Not much, really. Most of it is undeveloped land.
That's all I had.
Any more comments? I guess we, we have a motion to close the, close the public hearing. Would someone like to make that motion?
I, I don't know if you wanna close it, because I'm assuming you have to continue, based on some of the comments.
Okay.
Only so we can make a presentation at the next meeting, saying this is what you want us to do, and this is what we do, that, that'll be filed up in here. That's, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My moderator would be speaking out.
Alright, should we address waivers? Some of the issues were raised.
One of the issues is a waiver. They need to come up with a profile plan, so you can do it all when you go through, unless you wanna go through with it.
Okay.
I mean, unless you wanna, you, you don't like any of the waivers that you...
I think we're on board with waivers, anyway, I'll, we just mentioned it, so.
Okay.
You're on board with waivers, so we'll follow it. They said they'll accept the, all of one of those waivers, so we'll address that and also in the next submission.
So do you think you need to come back to us?
Well, you need the plan by. This is the rub all the time, because you'd like to have it three weeks before the next meeting, and the next meeting is four weeks away.
Right.
So it's, um...
What does this do for you, planning to get, be in front of the conservation?
We can't go to conservation until we finalize this plan. We wanna bring this final site plan, final drainage details to them, so that they know the town engineer has reviewed and approved it in the plan.
So I guess we need to vote to continue this.
Mike, as much as I know we like to move things forward, the next meeting would be the first Monday of November.
November sixth.
But we have to have, we, he would have to have everything done like in a week, which is pushing it.
Well, it'll be how, how fast Dave could turn it around.
Dave?
Right, because you're gonna work with Dave on...
Yeah, I mean, we have to have elevation plans, um, the tree issues and stuff, so I don't wanna...
I would suggest you're not gonna be ready.
Right, I, I don't wanna like make a problem.
I said we can't keep. So regretfully, I think we have to go to the December date. I know, I'm gonna hear about it in the parking lot, but... So whatever that first Monday or your meeting day is in December, I would suggest we continue to that date, so that we can spend the next three weeks getting everything ready and submit. And then we can get a review letter, and hopefully come to you with a hundred percent completed project, uh, plan on December, whatever.
I'll, I'll make that motion for the December meeting.
Four, December four.
I'll second. Motion made and second to continue this to the December fourth, be all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joan.
Right, thanks for your time.
Hold please, I gotta get Mike in. Boy, is this working.
Joan, you're gonna, they have to...
Oh, great.
Yeah, we, um, we must walk to something, something I want.
You do that, right, don't you, Anne?
This is amazing. Yeah.
Can't get a break.
Hey, Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great.
Alright, I'm gonna proceed to the six-thirty. Okay, uh, it being six-thirty more or less, public hearing, Rose Place subdivision, continue?
Voila.
There's Michael. Hey, Mike.
Mike? Oh, we see him for that.
No, he wasn't at the last one.
Was he the captain of the Starship Enterprise?
Did you hear that?
Michael, you look like the star, captain of the Starship Enterprise.
Alright, I couldn't make out what you was saying, it's all up.
It often is in space.
Mr. Azu, you ready?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Uh, good to see you again. Hello, Michael. Last time that we were here, um, we got our heads badgeed like crazy. And we had our numerous of, uh, items that we needed to address, uh, based on the report by, uh, PMP and JDE Civil Engineering Group uh, for the subdivision, and I believe, uh, we, um, addressed those comments. And listening to what Sean said, you know, in the previous hearing, it really is, uh, very stressful to try to get stuff done before the next meeting, because of the way this meeting's scheduled. But this was, uh, very accommodating, as well as Michael, in giving us, uh, I think I believe we had, uh, ten days, or thereabouts, to get the items addressed, and so we did. And I believe you have a report, uh, before you dated September twenty-fourth, uh, from JDE Civil Engineering. And so I can go through them, um, if you, if you will.
Please.
Okay. So, uh, we have a nine-lot subdivision, and, um, the first comment, uh, by, uh, by, uh, JDE Engineering. It said, number one, it has to do with general bylaws, and item number one, addressed our, uh, comments related to, um, the drainage basics. So we need to demonstrate that we need these minimum lock areas requirement for each lot that has drainage basics on them. And that are related to, that are related, if you go to sheet, uh, number, uh, three of twelve, as well as four of twelve, uh, we identify those easements.
Azu? Can you turn that a little?
Oh, yes.
So both the camera and these people? There we go. Thank you.
Pardon me?
You can't read that, no matter how close you are. Don't, don't worry about it. It's impossible to read.
Need a telescope.
And, uh, and so we, uh, indicated the lot areas. Uh, the one area that had been, uh, questioned, uh, related to this, uh, area here that they're using for drainage, this right here. Lot number four, if you recall, we had proposed that as a, uh, a house lot. But in doing the drainage analysis, we determined that, uh, we're gonna use that for drainage. So it'll be a total lot by itself, and so there will not be any need for an easement on that lot, because it's gonna be a drainage lot. And when the subdivision is done, and, uh, go for street acceptance, that lot with the drainage will be conveyed in its entirety. So there will not be any need for an easement on that one. And, um, and, uh, it says in the response, it says that the comment addressed. Number two, uh, dimensional and density table, uh, please include the minimum lock width at minimum front yard dimensions. And we have done that, if you look at this right here, uh, what you see labeled LWU on the, on the plan stands for lock width. Instead of writing out lock width all the time, in the legend, we define what the LW is. And so we have indicated the lock width on each lot. And one of those comments was related to, uh, the setback, that this will have to meet the, instead of a site setback, that's less, on this lot number, these two lots here, these have to meet the rear setback. And that's what we've done. We've shown that we can meet that. And then, uh, he asked for, uh, uh, the table sheets three and four, front yard requirements applied to each button street, and that what, and we've shown that we are meeting that. And then their comment is that it's been addressed. And then it says, uh, lot nine, lot nine mission, lot ten, uh, lot nine mission, and, uh, well, these are those two lots right here. And those are lot nine, lot, lot nine, this, this lot right here and this lot there. And those are lot nine, lot nine, this, this lot right here and this lot here. And that is all showing on this, on this plan, sheet number four, that's why. And then it says their comment has been addressed. Number five, it says that entrance and exit points, sheets five and six, lot one, please dimension the distance from the driveway to the intersection of the street line. And... And then we have included that, but we have, we have included that, that intersection.
Mike, Michael, would you care to go through your comments, please?
The comments basically have all been addressed. I backchecked everything on my review plans to make sure that every one of those comments was fully addressed. And the only items that basically the board needs to, to deal with are any of the waiver requirements that were put onto the plan. But everything else, for the drainage, the lot configuration, for zoning configuration, for stormwater management, the calculations, all that has been fully addressed. So if you, I mean, if there's a particular question on any one of the multiple comments that have been resolved, I'll gladly respond to them. But I don't want to put the board to sleep with a lot of the technical minutia.
Which Azu was trying to do. Do you hear me? I said Azu was trying to do that. I figure if we all fell asleep, we could get out of here. Okay.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I had one quick question for, for both the engineers. Who's going to be responsible for the drain adjustments in Whitman?
That will be part of the street acceptance.
But who will be, I mean, so will Abington be responsible to clean up the drain adjustments in Whitman?
Sure, we can make that a requirement for the individual homeowner.
Well, I, I guess this only comes up because the last subdivision that was in two communities is a private way. And they just maintain all their own stuff. I know it's not pretty all the time, but I think John Stone has some concerns about detention basins in Whitman being under his, falling under his purview.
It's kind of a unique situation being in two towns. Even some of the houses are in two towns.
Are in two towns. I let somebody figure out how they're paying their taxes. Right?
I can foresee, you brought up the question, that, that being a problem, being in two different towns.
I think cleaning the detention basins is going to be a real big problem, especially where it's all required now under the stormwater permit. You know, maybe, maybe when you first proposed it, it wouldn't have been such a big deal because we didn't have the stormwater permit that we have to adhere to now. But the store, but the town has a stormwater permit we need to adhere to and that includes cleaning detention basins.
Well, I will say, like in my town, in Bridgewater, what we do is we make the developer prior to street acceptance, post a maintenance cash money, that, so we calculate what it's going to require with an amortized value, and we make them pay that. And they haven't had any issues with those. So that you're not a burden with the bill.
I mean, same question as the last one, do we? What is our responsibility under the stormwater permit in terms of reviewing what they're doing?
No, no, I mean, it, you mean the detention basins? They have to, the DPW, that falls under their purview. But once it's, once it's out of here, it goes to them. And they have to prove that they're cleaning them, they go on a, a schedule. But that, because I get a copy of that every once in a while, of what they've had. They have a consultant go out and check them.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, for your little soul fences...
Nobody, I mean, these are in another town, that's a problem.
I know, but I mean, this, the Abington part, what is our responsibility for projects like this?
Well, I mean, the board did attempt to set a dollar amount. We do have a fund to clean the detention basins. No, I know, but just there's no money in that right now, so, because nobody could come up with a value. So I mean, that, that was discussed at some point.
I mean, I don't know if it's going to be helpful, I can show you what we do in Bridgewater.
Yeah, that would be great. You can show me that, how they came up with the value.
Yeah.
That would be great.
So, John's, can you articulate John's concern again?
I, I think he's concerned about the detention basins that fall in Whitman. Right? That they would be his, end up being his responsibility.
Lot seven, eight, nine, that lower part.
Yeah.
Everything that's over the town line. If it's in Whitman, then doesn't seem like it would be our issue. Now, this has got to go before the Whitman Planning Board, right?
That's correct. And they're, they're basically waiting for your action. Because if we don't have approval in Abington, it's dead on water with them anyway, because...
That could go the other way too.
Pardon me?
That could go the other way too.
Yeah.
You don't have approval in Whitman.
Uh, so walk me through your tree plan.
Pardon me, sir?
Walk me through your tree plan for removal, construction area.
Oh, okay, so, so I have, um, I call it flash and period, which was one of the items that...
Can I just point more thought on that last topic? So, would, is that a question that we would address either via the DPW or us to the Whitman Planning Board? And ask for their opinion on that?
I reached out to Whitman Planning Board after our last meeting, as requested. I left a voicemail and I sent an email and did not get any response.
We were going to share information with them, right? And we did that.
No, because I didn't get a response.
A response as to where to send it, or?
Yeah. Who, like, who would be there? Like, who should I send it to? I mean, the chairman's name was on the website and I could mail it to them, but I called, left a message and I sent an email to like a general mailbox and nobody got back to me.
If I'm not mistaken, didn't Mike have some interaction with Whitman at one point?
Yes. There was a while that PMP associates was actually doing the, the planning board reviews for the town of Whitman. And then they decided that they wanted to have some alternative reviewers. So lately I have not been, or the firm that I sold have, have not been that involved with Whitman. But back at the time that this was being reviewed, on its first submission, I was consulting to the town of Whitman, so I was able to see both sides.
It took quite some time. That's the first one.
So, we have this sheet right here of, of the, basically the erosion and sediment control plan for specification of how, of what we're going to do. I have, on that, I have included areas for stockpiling. On lot number three, including the watering basins. And so we have basically erosion control of the area along the perimeter of the project defines my limited clearing. So all the materials we stockpile right in these areas. I have one, two, three, four, five sections. And then what will happen, what will hap...
Can I stop right there?
Yes, sir.
Because you're, you're going off in another way. Well, we actually just talked about another project. I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak for him.
Okay.
But we have a new tree bylaw. And he's talking about having a plan showing all the trees that are going to be saved and then a plan showing where the new trees are going to be. So basically a landscape plan, but that's what we're looking for. Plants over six, six inches in diameter need to be flagged as, because whether, they probably would stay there, right? Is that what we're trying to do?
I mean, the first question is, how much is being cleared out?
On the, on the area right in here, except for obviously the road layout and then around the houses. But everywhere, I think fifty percent of the year, lots will be left untouched.
Say, okay, so fifty percent of lots will be left untouched, is what you're saying? Okay. And then, so the second part of that is, I think on page eight, you have, you're planting street trees.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we know what type?
I believe I put a note that, says that the, it will comply with the, the, what the planning board would like to see. Because for a simple reason that a lot of times we propose our pear trees and people don't like pear trees anymore. And there were some evergreens are new sites. So we, whatever the board feels is more appropriate based on what you've, what you've approved before, we would have...
Yeah, maple notebook. Listen, chestnut. So, for the fifty percent of the land that's cleared?
Yes, sir.
How much of that is for construction activity versus just one and a half yards, front yard, backyard?
It's mostly forty, forty yards.
Mostly forty yards?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, we have in our bylaw a replacement formula for cut down certain number of trees, you have to replant a certain number. Or you just have to come up with some sort of tree plan, basically. So what you're proposing is that around the, it'll just be street trees?
Yes, sir. And the, we didn't, I think Mike had actually alluded to it by the waivers of the request. If you go out there, most of the vegetation is in the, you know, it's a lot of trees in the area. So from a practical standpoint, it would be a daunting task to locate every tree in that land if you've, if you've had an opportunity to walk it. And so we would be definitely willing to do whatever the board would like us to do. But it really, I'm asking for a waiver on that for a simple reason that that's a lot of trees to, to locate and they're right up against each other, to be honest with you. So I requested a waiver for, you know, in terms of locating individual trees.
Fair to say you're just looking that they're not going in there and click at the whole, the whole thing? Some other places they've gone in and just cut a lot of trees.
No, no, no. I will tell you, I can send you pictures of what challenge done. Number one, it saves you money. You know, then they were doing that. And there were, most people these days like, don't like open cut lots, right? Because you don't want to be looking into your neighbors' yard and then you don't want your neighbor looking into your yard.
The flip side to that is a tree person is no longer with us. But once you start cutting a forest, some of those trees are protected. And they get wind blown and start falling down. So I think we were looking for some sort of a plan to, that we can actually kind of... Do you know where I'm, where I'm going with that? You know, there's going to be a lot of trees, they're so used to being inside the forest, now, now they're not.
That's happened at least twice. One on a subdivision and one on a rather large site plan. They cleared up to here, right? And then those trees that had been protected by all these trees in the front started falling down. And then that created...
So we're looking for some sort of...
Being able to see into the back, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I prefer something beyond street trees, but I think that's what we're allowed, one of the options we allow in there, so. We're taking down this, this huge canopy of trees and planning, you know, twenty-five foot decorative. That's, it's not quite the green canopy we're looking to protect, but I think it is an allowed alternative.
We do have a list of approved trees.
I can send it to you.
Let me actually look at all the regrading, there's nothing left. Which happens a lot in a such... Well, you want to recommend some trees? Kind of kicked around maybe, I mean, there's different...
Do you want me to go grab the list?
I think that's up to...
Or just have, send him the list.
That's part of the list.
That's part of his plan.
Can I make a comment about the trees?
Can you come up and give your name? Sorry. Their fans at home just love to give everybody.
Great. My name is Valer Panton at Seventy-Five Isabel. Basically, I think my home is in front of the wetlands. Now, in those wetlands, there's a lot of, you know, the obviously wetland trees, but there's also a lot of big pines and other trees. I mean, there's a lot of trees. So I'm saying that up the hill, they're going to start clearing up there. Obviously, they're going to cut roots. And they're, and basically you can't cut the trees down in a wetland unless it falls down. So these are all going to start falling down. Right now, there's a lot of dead ones and they're on their way down. I'm just, you know, that's my comment. I think I'm going to get, hopefully the trees will go that way, but I, you know, we've already had one come this way. But there's a lot of wetland, and I guess you're not going into the wetlands. And then my other question will be, once you can finish this project, who's going to own the wetlands? Is it Abington or are you just going to leave it with no tax base? Nobody's going to own it? That was my other, you know, question. But again, there's a lot of trees out there.
Are they, are they tall pines or?
Yeah, there's a lot of tall pines out there. There's a lot of the swamp maples, the, you know, the other ones, I call crap trees, but I don't know what the real name of it is.
But that's one of the neighbors, that's one of the areas that has a really tall pine.
Oh, yeah, there's some really tall pines out there. And the woodpipers have a field, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad that that point was raised. All the, so, in the previous plan that you had approved, we had created a passage to convince the neighbors to make sure that nobody, and they didn't want it. So in this plan here, all the lots encompass the entire subdivision. So there is not going to be a land that's hanging out there without ownership. All the lots, all the lands are made part of the proposed lots. But also, in terms of our, our clearing to, the question that Rick mentioned earlier, prior in the original subdivision, the conservation commission at least was only required a ten-foot buffer. Now it's a thirty-five-foot buffer from the wetlands. So not only are we not going to the wetlands, we're also protecting thirty-five feet of our buffer zone that we're not going to touch. So if you take that out, extrapolate that to the number of lots of their proposal, that's a thirty-five-foot wide swath around the entire project that we're not, in the upland area now, not wetlands, in the upland area that we can't go into. So that protects, that will, not only are you protecting the entire wetlands in their natural state, you're also protecting thirty-five-foot buffer of our upland area with all these trees in that, in that section. And we, if you look at a sheet number, if you look at a sheet number eight that shows the grading and drainage plan, you can see that I have a thirty-five-foot strip all through it. Entire project comes across here, same over here. That's thirty-five feet all along. So that we're not touching. Okay, and that is upland area, not wetlands area. So in addition to leaving the wetlands alone, we have thirty-five-foot, which will add up to more than two acres of, of upland area that we're not touching at all because of that buffer zone requirement that preservation has.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So this lot, this person will own all of that?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. There is no lot, there's no land that is not part of your lot.
All right, and then this person will own...
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, we should talk with the client about selection of trees. In some places, the trees are like fifty feet apart, other ones, they're about twenty feet apart. So that really depends what tree you select. If you get maples, they'll turn into a gigantic hedge if they're twenty feet together. So just, we're looking for, we have a list, but we're looking for old growth trees that will grow seventy-five, hundred years.
Based on to restore the canopy.
Yeah.
Any further comments from the board?
I'd just like to ask a specific question to Mike. I know, I know you said they addressed all the comments. I was looking at, excuse me, the, the comment about Wilbur Street. In your opinion, my problem with it the whole time is you're adding nine, nine more houses to the street that's, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, everybody pops to the street, it's, is it capable of handling an extra nine houses?
I don't think the nine houses is going to be impacting the street. I, I think that as the, the development is occupied and the people are driving on that, I mean, the fire department is, is one of the, the agencies that basically determines is there adequate room to bring the fire apparatus in. So that seems to have been, been worked out, even the older subdivision that was presented here. So I, I think that that's, that, that's been discussed at length. And I had some discussions with Azu at the end of the first review cycle about that street and, and what he was doing. And he did make some adjustments at the interface to make sure it was more user friendly for the new residents having to, to come into this development.
When you, when you get down to the end of that street where this new development is recognized, tough, obviously, you went to the subdivision and turned it around. I think that end of it would be much better with the subdivision.
Yeah.
I, I have a hard time turning it around down there, am I right? No.
With this, you will, because you can just go down the loop and go around.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
That's actually from the fire department. Peace. I'm just going to read a comment from the fire chief, Jack Glenn. Liz, I can follow up with an email specifically outlining this later, but as of right now, the fire department is fine with the hybrid locations and will be forwarding a letter as well that states they do not have to put a fire alarm box on that subdivision.
I had emailed the fire department to see if they had any comments on the plan. And I think, was somebody, were you down there?
Chandra.
Yeah. And so there was some confusion because they reached out to Marion and of course Marion doesn't have this plan yet. So I reached back out to the fire department to say, hey, we have the plan, do you guys have any comments? And that was when I got back.
I was, I was a little apprehensive at first not having the second. I still don't like it not having the second way out. From, from a standpoint of snow plowing, at least now you can snow plow that road. It's a, it's a nightmare now. You can come down and come around and back out. So it does have some good aspects to it, even though it's over, over the seven hundred feet.
Any more public comment? Do you want to care making comments?
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Yeah, please come on.
Yeah. I'm on the 53 Wilbur Street. I, I was just curious, how far down the two new holding blocks, the drainage area? We eliminated a couple of lots and put them in.
Yep.
How far down are they?
What do you mean how far?
Well, I mean, are they rated, like we're seventy, seventy-three Wilbur Street, the back of this lot. How far away from that is the lot?
The big things. You turn that into the drainage lot, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So you get seventy, all right, so here to there.
Yep.
How, how much distance are we talking about?
Well, that's about two, that's one, one hundred feet here, so that's one hundred.
Two hundred feet, okay. Yeah. Now, these drainage ponds, how deep are they?
Forty feet.
And there's no guardrails or fences?
No, because they're shallow and they're not, they're not steep on the sides. So you can walk in and out. And their regulation actually require that.
You can walk in and out. If you're, if you're an adult, you can walk in and out. They're not. The seventy-six, now they have two young children, another one on the way. You know, I'm just, fence around, that would be a...
I mean, they're, they're not wet ponds, like it's not constantly wet. It's, you know, if there's a rainstorm like we just had, it might get wet for you.
It's not a holding pond like...
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. All right, all right.
Do we have an authorized?
Yeah.
Any further? Anyone? Any questions? Anyway. All right. Would it be appropriate to close the hearing? Would someone like...
I mean, one other minute, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, please. Yeah, one more.
The trash truck on Wilbur Street, I know it backs up, is our, our famous trash truck going to be able to get in?
That, that's part of the, better part of it, they can drive down there.
Because that's a big truck.
They can drive down there now.
Yeah.
I was down there today and I, my pickup truck, I have a hard time turning it around. Now you'd be able to go into the subdivision and come around.
Yeah, but even on our street, our fine end, the trash truck, that has to back up to the end of it.
Right.
Starts forward.
Oh, you, you live on it, Isabel.
Isabel, yeah. On the end, on the dead end.
Yep. They back down my street, too.
Always fun to wipe them.
They, they can drive by.
Because they need to go around the corner, he's got to go beep, 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 because there's little kids.
Yeah.
They've got cameras on those trucks, I believe.
Yeah, but it's still little kids, you know. All the trash trucks there.
One of my neighbors, the back truck, as he backed up, hooked onto the telephone pole, pulled forward and the whole thing came down.
Oh, no.
I'm thinking, oh, poor guy. He's sitting on the curb so fired.
Okay. All right, sir. Would someone like to make a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in there?
Aye.
Aye. And then I guess our next thing is to vote to approve or disapprove.
Do you want to vote to approve or disapprove or do you want to do waivers or...
I guess, can I just make a comment?
Please.
How are we going to resolve the Whitman issue?
Well, we can't go, we can't go forward without that approval.
That's true.
Yeah, we can't go forward without that approval.
You're talking about the detention basis?
Yeah, I mean, the Whitman issue and the detention basis issue.
So, so the detention...
So are you going to file some sort of a document that it's the homeless problem? If it doesn't get cleaned, is, is that the direction we were going in?
But, or what I would recommend to you, that, that's up to this board. First, we're going to grant easement, so the owner of the land grants easement to the town, the highway department to maintain it. And then you come up, talk to the highway and say how much you think you're going to need for maintenance going forward, that they need to pay upfront.
So you're going to do that...
So that's an option.
You're going to do that in Whitman and Abington?
That will be correct. Okay? And then, and then if you choose to not go that route, then we can make that part of the responsibility of the homeowner. And, and that will be put into the deed, the conveyance deed of a particular lot before, before this. So my preference, if I was, because I do similar work for my town, my, my preference is that you pay, pay that money because it gives us better control than, than go to the homeowner and say, you haven't fixed it, you haven't maintained the pond yet.
Right, because the homeowner isn't going to.
Right, so...
So just a question, you said they do it in your town. Is that a perpetual fee or is that a lump sum fee?
It's a lump sum fee because you, because you...
We've been battling this problem with what do you do with it? Where's the interest? It's going to cost more money down the road. We still haven't resolved that issue.
So, so what we, what we, what we, so we here have different sizes, we have different regulations. We have a four lot subdivision regulation, a ten lot subdivision regulation, and twenty lot subdivision regulation. And so it propagates based on the size of subdivision. The minimum that we charge is ten thousand dollars upfront. And it goes up to, it goes up to thirty thousand dollars.
How about I call John Stone and see what his preference would be?
And I think that's a great idea, but I'd like to, we've been hashing this back and forth and we haven't come up with, with, if, what time did you say we did?
Three o'clock.
If, if they've got a good system, we would like to see, I don't want this to be a problem.
The problem is we can't invest the money.
Right.
We can't invest it.
So the problem comes where we hold it.
Right. Well, we can and we can hold it. Sort of an surety council will...
I can send you what we do with it.
Well, it can make a little money, but what you're, what you're dependent on are all these other subdivisions paying in.
Right.
Correct.
Right? And you would be the only one in there right now. And I'm not sure how many more public waste subdivisions they're going to do with this town.
It's pretty, pretty hard to go back on.
Right, we can't go back and impose that. I mean, I'm happy to call John to see what his preferences is, but...
I just don't want, I just don't want this come to be accepted and all of a sudden this is a problem and nobody's grasping, nobody's...
I think it would be better off if it was in the hands of the property owner.
They're not going to do it.
I know they're not going to do it.
They're not going to do it. Some may, but it's got to be consistent.
Well, you can, you can do a hybrid. Which means you get the money anyway and make it our responsibility of the homeowner to get on and then you can always go in. So I can see, I can see, I agree.
Well, again, I don't want to be at the end of this and, and nobody wants to.
Right.
It needs to be resolved. Contractors at the end, we're not going to accept, plan boards not going to recommend accept of this because we don't have some sort of planning, detention area.
Right, so that could be a route. I mean, even if a subdivision is designed to your requirements and gets approved, you are not obligated, not even these statutes say you must accept it. So, so you could say, yeah, you've met all our requirements, but we're not going to accept them for this, for as far as reasons. So you can still do that, though.
Have any ideas, Mike? Have any ideas?
I need it on view, sorry. I've run into this issue in a lot of different communities. And the problem is, is that the homeowners, unless they have an HOA for that, that development, they're not really going to want to maintain the facilities. Azu has a good idea about some form of a contribution into, into the, to the town for their maintenance fund. Another thing would be that you require a, a reference on their deeds for every lot that's sold, that they acknowledge the fact that they have stormwater management facilities in their development and that they are going to have a responsibility for maintaining that. We've, I've seen that when I worked in, in Maryland, where we actually had documents that each homeowner was responsible for the, the maintenance, if you wanted to go with, with that as a HOA type of thing. But requiring the maintenance to be on the owners of each of the individual lot owners. The big problem is, is that the water from the streets in a public way being put into stormwater management facilities, and two of those facilities are going to split town line chips. But again, it's public water going into these facilities for the public roadways. And a lot of communities feel that the public works department is responsible for that, maintaining that because of their MS four requirement. So it becomes a real, real debate as to who's going to pay for it and how they're going to pay for it. And with more and more stormwater management facilities, the towns have a larger maintenance and operation budget. So Azu's idea is probably a good idea to be, to be able to have the developer come upfront with the, the per lot payment. And that's all going to be rolled into the price of the lot. But this way here, the town at least can get something upfront to establish some sort of monies that they can, they can either put in their annual budget or into a revolving fund. And that's something that you just may want to make that as a condition of, of approval, that the, the town is not going to accept these facilities without some sort of operation maintenance fund established prior to acceptance of, of facilities. And that way they give you time to work with the town, especially public works is how they want to have it handled.
So, so it's probably not a bad idea to be something in their deeds like Azu said about a hybrid, so they're aware of it?
Yeah. That way they, they can't say, well, I didn't know I had ownership in that or, I didn't know I had to work and maintain it. Well, it's in your deed. And we've done that in a couple of other projects in Abington, by the way, where there was a requirement that they had to come up with a draft deed as part of the, the, the approval process, that it's approved and that prior to endorsement, they have to have a draft deed to show that they're going to have the, you know, these things in place. It's the same thing with the draft deed, is to acknowledge that the ownership of the, fee ownership of the roadway right of way has been retained by the developer and, and not conveyed to the property owner. You ran into that with the street that, that's just near Lowe's. They had to go back to the banks to get releases.
And I would, I would say to you, I have no issues with it because I have done, I have had to deal with it for twenty years on my own property. So I'm a part of an ownership, it's on my deed, about my drainage, you can look it up, two early Pleasant Street in Ridgewell. So I have, so I have no problem seeing that somebody else should do it, say it then.
We really haven't had a subdivision since all this new stuff has, has come on and we've been talking about it.
So should we initiate it here?
I think we need to.
Yep.
And if part of it's on the homeowner's deed, at least they can, like Mike said, they can't say we didn't know about it. So that's something we can work out with John Stone and Azu, you going to come up with some ideas?
Yeah, I will, I will email it, Liz, and you can just submit it to the board. I have, I have exact language of the issue.
Okay.
So should we continue this?
Yes.
I don't think you need to continue it just to...
Put it as a condition?
Yeah, leave it as a condition. Because that's not going to come up really until lot release, right? He'll have to sign a covenant and do all of that.
Yeah.
And then in order to do lot release, you can have him sign his life away with notices on the deeds.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's all done.
I mean, and, and even if you guys want, we could start filing that stuff separately, just a sheet of paper at the registry of deeds. Because I know it didn't make it onto all the deeds on Carriage Hill.
Yeah, that's the one I was...
Right? That was a problem and I'm, and over at Robert English Way, it's supposed to say on their deeds that the bandstand was there first and the track was there first. So any noise emanating from there is something you have to live with. But we don't ever see those deeds, so...
It can get slipped through, perhaps.
Right, that, it can, but that would show up on a title search.
Right.
If the board filed something with the registry of deeds saying, for this subdivision, this roadway, this condition was made for these lots, for the road, for whatever, right? Whatever the condition is, we can file it at the registry of deeds and then it should show up in a title search.
If they can get it on each deed, at least the first person that buys can't say.
Right. And, and I would love to be able to think that that would happen.
Right.
But that's...
Final?
Right, a wing and a prayer, too.
Control, control what you can control.
Well, to the, the... But to, to, to what Liz's point, so lot release, you have to do the roadwork to a certain level before you release lots.
Right.
So when you release a lot, about what we do, because I deal with some similar situations. So what we've done is not only at the lot release, but before, as long as it's made part of the approval, what we require is that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the building, that a copy of the deed is submitted to the planning board for, so.
Good idea.
So you have it at the lot release as well as CO.
Yeah.
I'll let you catch up on your writing.
All right, I'm, I'm good. All right, so we are at, do you wanna approve the plan or disapprove the plan and grant or not grant waivers?
I would say we do, if we're gonna approve it, we do the waivers afterwards. So I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the plan itself.
All right, and it's dated September eighteenth.
Revised date of September eighteenth, is that?
September eighteenth. So eight eight and then September eighteen?
Yes.
Do we know, we need to close the public hearing before?
You did.
We did.
Oh, we, oh.
You did.
So Bob's made the motion.
Okay.
Somebody wanna second it?
Oh, I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded?
All right, and all, Mike, all the conditions were resolved?
Yes, they were.
Okay, so I don't have to make a contingent upon your September?
I think there's one worksheet that Azu has to, has to adjust, but it didn't, doesn't alter anything, he just has a, a, a number that's flipped.
Okay. I'm just gonna add that as one condition. And you're voting the standard conditions of a subdivision approval?
Yes.
All right.
So motion made and seconded?
And, and that you want what on the deeds? That you want language on the deeds? That the basins belong to the property owners?
Not about, it, it was, she says, including a condition that the individual house lots, that notice of the drainage easement and its maintenance be noted in the individual deeds.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So I can really just go to the registry and steal the language on yours?
I can email it to you, too.
Okay.
So you don't have to waste that time.
And then, and then the cost is to be determined? I hate to leave it like that.
I would say put away a minimum starting point and then to be, to be changed or revised upon consultation with the Director of Public Works of the Highway Guy. So at least you have a benchmark.
So if we had a benchmark of the ten grand?
Yeah.
We'd see what, what.
What's your, what's your ten lot subdivision number?
Ten grand.
Ten grand?
Right.
I thought that was four.
Then you go, then the four lot subdivision is five.
Oh, okay.
Ten lot is ten grand. When it goes to twenty, it's twenty grand. Then thirty and above is fifty, so.
You have to catch, Liz, catch up to her writing.
Okay.
Well, most of the maintenance is mowing the grass. Really, it, it's not so, so bad. It's the, the detention ponds, retention ponds that grow swamp grass, puffy things. Those are the ones that are tough, cause you gotta, you hack all that stuff out.
I gotta mow that.
Yeah, you get rid of that stuff. Yeah, I mean, if you keep on it, I mean.
Yeah.
One off the top of my head, you can't even see it anymore. When you go into Monroe and the right, you would never even know it's there.
Move this along. Liz, could you read the motion back?
We do, we do that. Motion to approve the plan dated eight eight, revised nine eighteen, contingent upon the small revision of a number that Azu has to make, that's contained in the letter dated nine twenty-four from J D E Civil. And the language that Azu's gonna give me about the home, the house, the lot owner being responsible for maintenance of the detention basin and the receipt of ten thousand dollars from the developer.
Initial deposit.
Initial deposit.
Non-refundable.
He's going, come on, man, you're killing me.
I would be, it's another conversation, but I would be interested in the association making a, a payment once a year to maintain it, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that now because the ten grand, the ten grand isn't, the ten grand isn't gonna last forever.
Yes, so that said.
Motion made and seconded, and Mrs. Shea has read the full motion into the record. So all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so. Did you give me a separate list of waivers?
Uh, yeah, it's right on the, uh.
On the plan?
Yes.
Right. Right on the front.
Okay.
Did, did we resolve the name thing?
Oh, we need to vote that before. That's on the agenda.
Well, this is on, that's one of the waivers.
All right, do you wanna jump that quick and do the, do that quickly?
After the chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. So I think I explained to you the last time when Azu reached out to the Veterans Agent to get a veteran's name for this road, there was, Henry Hurt was the last name left on the list that I received when I started working here. So yay for you guys for naming all the roads. The problem is the Veterans Agent couldn't find a Henry Hurt. He did find a Henry Hurst. So what I need from you guys is to accept that Henry Hurst is the actual name instead of Henry Hurt on that list.
So we need to, to vote to accept the recommendation of the Veterans Agent?
Yes. To change the name.
I'll take that motion.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it's Henry C. Hurst.
Mm-hmm. I'll put it on the mark.
Yep. Okay. So the first waiver, Article three, two hundred dash twelve point C, five J allowed plans without showing trees over ten inches in diameter.
You wanna just take them as a whole?
Or you can do them as a whole, that'd be even easier.
That would be way easier. If everybody's okay with that, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm just going to record right now, the tree thing is a serious bylaw, it's a real bylaw, it's an actual bylaw, it's on my books, people need to start following it.
I, I think legitimately for him, it's that this conversation, this conversation started in July and we hadn't heard back from the AG's office. So, and so I didn't say, so I will send you the list of trees?
Sure.
And I'll send you the bylaw and the, the plot of it.
Sure. No, Rick, I was more in terms of locating the existing one, just because of, but it showed what we're gonna create, I don't have no problem.
No, that's fine, it's, I mean, it's the previous one too, and just making sure that people aren't treating this like it's an option, like they do with the elevations, so.
Thanks, Mike. Nice to see you.
Thanks, Mike.
About before, I don't know.
Good to see everybody.
You too, hold on, hold on.
We, I spoke with the fire chief, he said it's not his responsibility to bring it up. I did not include it because you require green accretion, but he said, and I quote, we, they like the cape coat burn because it's easier for them to get over, uh, uh, if they have to. That's part of the reason why they recommend them not having those islands too, in the middle of the road.
They don't have, they don't have to pay to replace it though, when it breaks down and crumbles, that's the problem.
The, the vertical ones, yes, but the sloped ones, you ride, you ride over it. And, and so I would have, think that if, if you would consider that, I'd be great. The eighteen inch, not twelve inch, eighteen inch is a little wider, eighteen inch, instead of the twelve inch cape coat burn, to require, to allow eighteen inch cape coat burn in your degree.
That wasn't part of the waivers?
No.
No, sir, it's just about something that I, I discussed with the fire chief.
Mike, you got any? Oh, he left.
I asked you a question, those asphalt burns, are they like, how tall are they in the back, typically, are they like six to nine inches?
Oh, no, 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 the, the six to eleven inches, well, that's why they stop making them, because you whack them right out, you heat them. The three inch ones, that's, you gotta be eighteen inches wide? And then three inches on the back end so that you fill, you fill right into it.
I, I think this is, this is a discussion for another time, our policy has been ran a curve.
Yeah, this is two and a half hours into this meeting, we need to start moving on.
All right.
If you wanna put that in writing, what you're requesting?
Okay.
I can put it on the next agenda, is that right with everybody, for November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for encouraging us, it's been a, a tough road.
It's been a long road.
We appreciate, we appreciate your toughness and, and it's really, obviously we didn't have approval, so I'm not trying to butt around. You, you, it's a very informed board, very, very informed board, and I appreciate that. It's against the, there's a passage that says in scripture, iron, shovels, iron. And you make us drop all the fluff and make sure we know what the hell we're doing, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have MBTA, history of communities.
All right, I did not get the modeling for the train to Center Rabbington, but I gave you what I had. And I cannot trust the urgency of this board making a decision next month. It's not fair for me to ask you to make a decision when you haven't seen the modeling for that last option. But that would then give us two months to get the zoning done, see ya. You have to consult, do the zone and get it back to you guys and get it to a point where you guys are okay with it. And then I need to get it to that new executive office of livable, walkable, trainable communities or whatever.
Is that really the name?
It's amazing, wow.
It's pretty close to it.
That's amazing.
So anyway, they are required, I need to have that done by the end of December to make it to our April town meeting. They need a ninety day review period and they're reviewing all the rapid transit first before they do commuter rails, because they have a different schedule than we do, it's, I have no idea, but, so I believe I will need the full ninety days for them to turn it around and say whether it's compliant or not.
So, I, I, the fifty acres zoning, zone that we have to create, fifty acre zone? The idea is that in that fifty acres, they need to be able to build a thousand twenty-two units by right?
We have the capacity to build one zero two two units, yes.
Does it, and it doesn't matter how many units already exist on that?
No.
Okay. So I'm looking at the, the GIS, online GIS database, and Woodlands Way, Woodlands is thirty-four acres.
Okay.
And Monahan Crossing, those two parcels are eight acres. So just those two, those two little developments is forty-two acres. And then, I mean, we can toss eight acres up the airbase, but I mean, it is.
Okay.
I just, I, I'm just wondering if my mistaken, if you wanna include the La Pointe one, that's another ten acres and that's the whole district right there.
And does, does the Woodlands count because it's already built?
That's what I'm, wanna find out is, I mean.
So we have to zone for the capacity to build and the fact that, I mean, so, I mean, I'll ask our consultant, but that makes perfect sense to me because if you think about it, a single family home or a duplex exists on Progress Street and that could come down in fifteen units or seven and a half units or whatever, could go up there. So, I mean, I don't know how many more units are gonna fit on Woodlands if that were to come down.
I mean hypothetically, well, all it's saying is like, if you wanna take, tear down what's at the Woodlands and build higher density, have at it.
Right.
You can do it right here, this is your zone.
The, um.
It's not us.
The one at Zero Summer is already pretty high density.
Yeah, and it's not up for us to make the math work.
No, no, we're being the developer.
Just the same.
We're just saying, here's fifty acres that you can build on.
So you're talking the Woodlands?
Woodlands, Monahan Crossing and La Pointe.
So if we do ten fifteen Plymouth Street?
We'll even do fifty-five acres, show that we're being good.
Extra, extra, we'll do extra.
Give us these three properties, we'll do extra.
Um, okay. We would probably have to include where the senior center is to link all of that together, in the pickleball.
The Woodlands might connect out back.
I think it does.
It does?
I think a portion of, yeah, whatever you're putting together has to be contiguous.
Yeah.
Right?
And I think the La Points connect out back of the Woodlands.
I think you're right.
Yeah, and you can even add those two properties in front of it, too, I mean.
Put the wetlands in the.
Well, I know, I'm talking about the one they just built three years ago, four years ago.
The Boski, the ten units?
Yeah.
Okay.
Throw it all in there, make it sixty acres.
The garage.
We can get an award.
All right. So if I reach out to our consultant tomorrow and have her map that and bring that back in October, would that seem to be good for everybody if that works and the modeling works and it's compliant, if I have her run that scenario?
You're happy with that.
I think it's the easiest, easiest thing to do.
Yeah, and quite frankly, she's gonna use our Todd District zoning as our base.
Right.
Right, she's already just gonna take that and, and tweak so it's compliant, which is, you know, you hit a couple of switches.
Yeah.
All of this would be contingent upon the answer to whether or not the existing Woodlands, for example, can be used.
I, I think he's right, I think.
You could tear it down.
And so you have the capacity, and I think that's what I have such a hard time wrapping my head around is the capacity to build it, right? We just have to show the land that's, would be capable of hosting that.
Like the Woodlands might only be eight or ten units per acre, so technically it can be increased.
Right. All right, so I, and I will.
I'm sure it can't be this easy, but I mean, let's find out.
All right, so I can have her check for compliance, I will do this first thing in the morning, all right? All right, that's fabulous.
We're gonna move along, unless you have anything else?
I need you to vote to release that surety.
We gotta vote to, gentlemen, we gotta vote to release the surety, cape coat lumber through nine thirty twenty-three?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
We did, we did the Veterans Street name list.
You did that already.
Reminder, special town meeting Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and that's gonna be at nine o'clock.
Nine AM.
And we're not gonna have any meetings before that.
No.
And Liz, you wanna hazard this mitigation?
The hazard mitigation plan is, the full draft is out for public comment, it's on the website, I have a hard copy in the office, there's a hard copy at the library, you can email me with any comments you have, we've been working on it for a year, feel free to give it a twirl, it's lovely reading. And then the only other thing I have for you guys is I received a letter today from from Ronald Whitney regarding withdrawal of site plan approval for 662 Adam Street. And it's greetings, as you may recall, my office represents Mr. Robert Sullivan and Ms. Jane Sullivan, owners of 662 Adam Street, Abington. You may also recall the Sullivans have previously petitioned for and received site plan approval from your board to use that property as an industrial yard associated with their heavy equipment business. Going to skip, it got appealed. The appeal has been pending before the land court since May of 2021 and the Sullivans have prevailed in almost all aspects of that litigation. Notwithstanding this, in an effort to bring some finality to these matters, the Sullivans now wish to inform your board that they are hereby withdrawing the petition for site plan approval. They acknowledge the significance of this withdrawal and the property will be continued to use for residential use only and any other further use of the premises will require action by either your board or the Board of Appeals.
Do they need to restore it now?
I don't think he's required to restore it. That's, again, that's at that next level.
Okay, one final thing I want to bring up is David Johnson. David has been a tremendous asset to this board over the years. But he is retired. I think we're about the only client that he works for these days.
Yep.
So we don't have to act on this now, but I think we need to give it some thought, you know, and we'll talk to David and find out if he's interested in continuing and whatnot. But I guess probably sooner than later, we're going to have to have someone in his place.
Look for somebody else, is that where you're getting at?
Yes, yes, sir. But that's not something we have to act on.
One more detail just to bring up about the Southfield project. The last couple of presentations I've seen the board make to the Board of Selectmen and to the Finance Committee, they mentioned how an access road off Adam Street was not going to happen and they felt that the response times going around through Trotter Road was going to be sufficient. And it was not something they were going to be pursuing at this time. I spoke with the fire chief and he strongly disagrees. And he has made an access road through Adam Street one of his top priorities for the project moving forward. So that's just a little bit of information for your back pocket. I talked to the chief, he said it's okay to bring it up. That this idea that fire would be okay going up through Trotter Road to access the Abington property is not okay. He disagrees with it. So keep that in mind.
All right, it's that time of night, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I...